Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Roberts and I am the owner of MarionCountyinterview.com. I want to thank you everybody for coming out. I know the weather's a little bit iffy here in a little bit, so we're going to show going here right away. I want to thank the candidates for coming out this evening too. I know you guys have been busy this last few weeks and got a busy seven and a half days ahead of you too. So, very important election coming up. We're getting right to it. One of the main reasons I wanted to do this forum was to give the audience the chance to ask questions. And we've just got a half a dozen cards or so right now. We will be collecting the cards here throughout the introductions. If you have a card ready with a question, just raise it up and come around and give for you. But what I'm impressed by of all of them, and there's like two and three questions on some of these, we're up to about 14 questions already and only one of them's a repeat. So that means everybody's got some different views of what's going on. So, we'll get things started. Interview Steve Woodhouse, your moderator for the city.
Hey, everybody. Thanks again for coming. Thanks to candidates to come and everything that Mike just said. You know, it's been a tough road so far. Well, not tough, but it's long. Are you guys tired yet? Yeah, I know the feeling. Anyway, I just want to get things rolling. You don't want to listen to me talk all night. We're going to start off with introductions by the candidates and let them kind of give you their two-minute pitch of why you should vote for them. And we should-
... lived in high school in 1970. I met a Pella girl. We were married in 1976. Women in the Twin Cities area. Which we had, where we had our five children. Wanting to smaller, wanting to more, living in a smaller community with better values, we moved and raised our children. We moved to Pella in 1987. Where my wife Arnold worked as a nurse in the Health Services Department at Pella Corporation and I founded an electrical contracting business, which currently we are in the process of transitioning to the next generation. I have 21 grandchildren with the majority of them living in the Pella area. In the fall of 2001, I ran and was elected to represent the Third Ward of Citizens of Pella as their council representative, a position which I have served in since that time. I am often asked why I continue to serve in the city government. The short answer is, is that I love this community. It's history that gives us our perspective. It's values that provides us with a compass to lead us in an honorable and right direction. It's people with their strong work attitudes, entrepreneurial spirit, and broad sense of community. With my past experience of public service for almost two decades and local business experience for over three decades, I would bring unique skills and perspective to the mayor's position.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
My name's Don Ward. And I'll tell you how I'm running for mayor. Give you a little bit of history. I was not born in Pella. I moved to Pella in January of 1979 with my wife and two small children to go to college of all things. So I wanted to be a football coach. So I have now lived in Pella for 40 years. And one of the things that happened while, you know, I was a non-traditional student and so we became pretty connected in the community while I was going to school, which, you know, not a lot of students do that. You have campus life and get connected to campus. We got connected to the community and we fell in love with the community. And so, God blessed us with the fact that we were able to find jobs in this community and we were able to remain in this community and live here for, as I said, for 40 years. We have four children. We were able to raise them in this community. In fact, we're pretty integrated here in Pella. My daughter and her husband built the Culvers and own and operate the Culvers Restaurant. My son Sean started the Central Tire business out on the edge of town and he owns and operates that. I've been in business in a few different ways over the 40 years that I've lived here. And so, I love this community. It's changed a lot in 40 years. I remember when my wife and I first moved here, we were uptown one day shortly after we moved here to go to the, I think it was a Ben Franklin store. And we got out of our car and there were two people standing on the street. They were talking Dutch to each other. Now, I got a Dutch name, but I didn't know any Dutch and so we both looked at each other kind of funny. But Pella's changed a lot in 40 years. The world has changed a lot in 40 years. So I'm interested in leading this community forward after this election.
Thank you, Mr. Banstrup.
Yes, I'm Calvin Banstrup. I grew up on a farm northeast of Pella near Usheran. Went to grade school in Purry, or Puria, depending on how familiar you are with the area. High school in North Mahaska in Usheran. Graduated from there in 1981 and as you may recall, that was in the depths of the farm crisis. Going back to the farm was not too much of an option. And plus, since it was a dairy farm, I thought there had to be a better way to make a living. So, went to Bruce's area of Sioux County, went to Dort College, got a double major in agribusiness and accounting. And while there, I had a very enjoyable experience of spending a semester in the Netherlands where I was able to learn Dutch and as well pick up some Dutch culture as well. So that was one of the highlights of my college career. Following graduation, I was a bank examiner for the state of Iowa for 11 years, living in West Union and in Webster City, looking at the quality of the loan portfolios in the banks that were in those territories. Following that, the desire to get closer to this area, I moved from bank examining into banking. Getting a job first at Leighton State Bank and then now at Bank Iowa, where the combination of those two, I've been in banking for 22 years as a loan officer. While at Leighton, I also got the job, or asked to do the job of city clerk. I took it more out of sense of obligation, but I found out that I really enjoyed the aspects of city government. Learning everything from budgeting, from special projects to reports to the state. And with that background, I thought that this would be a good opportunity to go into the city government here in Pella to help out where we're at.
Thank you. And I apologize if I have to say Mr. Banstrup is running for Ward Two along with Mr. Van Stryland. Mr. Van Stryland, go ahead.
Van Stryland. Thanks to everyone who's made this evening possible. I've lived in Pella for 41 years. My wife Elsie and I raised our family here. Our children attended school here. Our daughter Jill Van Stryland long works as a pharmacy tech at Pella Regional. Her children attend school in Pella. We love the historical treasures, heritage and culture of the community and did not return to the big cities where we previously lived. In my eight years on the city council, we've completed the reverse osmosis system. The new Jordan well is in operation and the Missouri River Hyperelectric Dam should be operational in about seven months. We are delighted this clean renewable energy is about to go online. Our city staff does an amazing job of keeping the lights on and good water coming to our homes. Keeping the electric power on will only improve when the last switches are flipped at the dam. However, many of these same types of major issues and projects continue. We are currently facing a $5 million wastewater treatment update managed by the DNR and we want to keep our residents safe and secure. We are currently dealing with infrastructure annexation, revitalization of Oskaloosa Street, revitalization of playgrounds in our parks, housing, and development endeavors to name just a few. In the midst of these many projects, it would be exciting for me to see them accomplished and resolved. I've studied social studies, governments, and politics in three languages and in three countries. I've observed in my travels and in my formal and informal studies that it's easy for candidates to make promises. I've also noted that it's not so easy for them to fulfill those promises. As a retired person, I have more time now to serve the city than I've ever had before.
Thank you very much. Ms. Folskraft.
Good evening. I'm Robin Folskraft and I'm running for Ward Two City Council. I have my bachelor's degree in nonprofit administration and through that and volunteer opportunities, I've learned how to budget, communicate, and how important accountability is. But the number one thing I think about an elected position is the representation of the voters. I would say one of my biggest accomplishments during my career is to convince different agencies to sit down and work together in a cooperative effort for those that we help. That can sometimes be a real challenge. With that being said, I would encourage this community to work together and to work, rather than work independently or at odds with each other. If that means work sessions where both sides can voice their opinions than work sessions it should be. We're here to represent all of Pella, all ages, all socioeconomic groups, and all businesses. All together, we make one fantastic community. I've made a career doing that and I would love to represent you in Ward Two.
Thank you, Ms. Chris.
My name's Nicole Pickray and I'm running for Ward Two. I was born and raised in Sioux Rapids, grew up there and had an amazing opportunity to come to Pella after I built and sold my own social consultancy back in 2013. So, at the age of 23, I went out on my own. I started my own business. I learned a lot. I fell out my face a lot. I got up a lot. And I think through those learnings and running a business and then joining an amazing community of business professionals here in Pella, I've been able to see the way that budgets work. I've been able to bring people to the table and I think my unique skills in communication will help me to bring the community together. I know that there are a lot of issues right now that people feel a little bit divided over, so my hope in being elected to City Council will be that we can get those issues out in front of everybody and come to the table and make some really great moves for Pella in the future. This community, I think somebody has said it before, but we have a lot going for us. And so continuing to build on that momentum and still bring new opportunity and act as a gatekeeper for innovation and new ideas here in our community would be my ultimate goal.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the At-Large candidates now, starting with Liz Travor.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Travor and I'm running for At-Large. I am the Corporate Communications Manager at Vermeer. I've been there for seven years. So my day job is spent communicating. But fun fact, I actually do a lot of communicating outside of my nine-to-five as well. It's a passion of mine. And so similar to Nicole, I think that's something that we could really bring here to our community, communicating, bringing others together. I grew up in Pella. I spent my formative years here. I attended Pella Christian School System. Thanks, senor, by the way, for the español. Also, I left for a little while, but I came back. My husband and I moved back seven years ago. I took the job at Vermeer and we've called Main Street our home ever since. This past January, I was actually named one of the top 10 under-40 professionals in Marion County. Among me were incredible professionals and I saw, I looked, I wasn't familiar with this group really before, so I dug in and I looked at previous years and I saw there's an incredible amount of people that are doing really neat things in this community. And so how can we bring them together? How can we use those communication skills to bring this group and really how can we all come together of all ages and the work that's happening here? I've said it before, we are a community that was founded by a risk taker. We were built by innovators. There's so much happening, there's so much energy. How can we take that and channel it and work together to really bring our community forward?
Tony Bakova.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everyone. My name's Tony Bakova and I'm a lifelong resident of Pella and currently in my second term on the Pella City Council. Over the course of this campaign, it's been pretty interesting to me to listen to citizens talk about the things that are important to them, the things that they think are important to the community, and then think through how those things also align to both Liz and Chris as we've had a couple of these forums already and have had plenty of opportunities to share our perspective on what should be the way and direction of leading this community. And one thing that's become very clearly clear to me is that, you know, Pella is on a pretty good trajectory already. You know, I don't think that necessarily all the priorities align between maybe the three of us and the perspective of what direction this community should go in. When you look around, Pella's in a good place. Pella's heading in the right direction. Things are growing and flourishing quite well. As the city government, we have one of the strongest financial positions in many, many years, a bustling economy that continues to grow. And as a result, we have more housing and developments going on in this community than we've had in many, many years. Through all this development and growth, we've enjoyed being able to maintain the tax rate in our community for 18 years. If you sit and think about that a second, that is nearly unheard of in the state of Iowa and neighboring states. And that comes from smart fiscal responsibility from councils and mayors before us to the current council and mayor that's in place today. I'm a representative of this entire community. I don't represent one age group, one demographic. I represent all 10,335 people that live in this community. That's what I'm elected for. Growth and progress are important to every community and Pella is no different. And I think when you look around and talk to people that visit our community, they talk about, you know, they love coming here because it's different and it's unique. And I think it's time we stand up and we be proud that we are different and that we are unique. Because our goal should not be to be like every other community in the state of Iowa. Our goal should be Pella and to be unique and to continue to draw those people that want to come here and make Pella home. And I hope that on November 5, when you go to the polls to vote, that I have earned your vote.
Okay, and Chris Myers.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you, Marion County Interview for hosting this event. Once again, my name is Chris Myers. I'm running for At-Large seat in the city of Pella. I was born and raised here, 27-years-old. My small hiatus was four years of college at Northwestern in Orange City, Iowa. My community is something I'm passionate about. There's a reason I moved back home. I drug my wife here with me. Something about Pella is alluring to those who grew up in it. We love what heritage we have and what we can see in the future. As we've said before, and Liz has said it, reiterate it again, Pella's built by innovators and dreamers. Myself, being a small business owner, I was one of those people. I had a passion and a dream. I co-owned Dutchman Distillers with two other individuals and that is a passion of mine. But also, city government is a passion. I've been attending city council meetings for about a year now. It's not that great from the perspective side of things, but it's something I'm passionate about. I should have been attending earlier. I remember growing up, my dad would always make me watch it on TV and I would always question why I was watching it. Now, looking back, I should have paid more attention, should have been passionate about city government and everything that we have in Pella and what we will have in Pella. Very passionate about community services as well as history and preservation. I've been attending historic preservation meetings, we're discussing historic districts. Planning zoning, they actually have a meeting tonight and there's some big things on the docket there in regards to large industry and things like that. So definitely come out, November 5. The big push is just vote. Whoever it is for, just get out and vote because that's where you will be heard, in the vote.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Ward Four candidates now. David Hopkins.
Hi, guys. Yeah, Dave Hopkins is my name. I'm running for Ward Four. I'm excited to be in this position tonight. I'm excited to see what November 5 brings. I'm excited to see what's going to happen in our community for the years to come. Like Tony said, we've got a great trajectory that our city is on and I'm excited to be a part of moving that forward as the years go on. I've got four kids in the community, married, I've got a handful of business ventures that are involved here in our community. I've got a vested interest, I should say, in the success of our community today and for the years going ahead. I look forward to hearing from each and every one of you in Ward Four or whatever ward you may be in and representing you.
Thank you, Mr. Bill Harkins.
Hi, I'm Bill Harkins. A lot of you probably know me as Billy Jack. I grew up here in Pella, graduated class of 75 from Pella High. Have three daughters, 10 grandkids. So I've been around for quite a while. Actually, what I'd like to say is, it's pretty simple really. My idea is we need to work for lower- (music) Hey, that was good. I broke it. We need to work on lowering taxes, stop wasteful spending, and review some of the ordinance and rules that might impede the growth of the community. We need to, after speaking to lots of people last week, I've found out that there are several quick fixes that we could do. Hardly any taxpayer money would be spent, but they would greatly enhance the parks and bring in more people, whether it's just from town or whether it's from out of town just for that purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm trying something different tonight that I've never done in a forum before. I'm going to have the candidates ask each other a question. I'm going to have just the candidates, you know, ask only their competitors a question, not the whole panel. So I think we'll start with the Ward Two candidates and I'll let Mr. Van Stryland have the first question.
Oh, well, I guess if I would ask, I'd probably have to ask each candidate, would you fund, I guess we'll alphabetically, we'll start with a banker. Would you fund each suggested project or would you try to keep taxes as low as possible?
Well, it's impossible to fund each suggested project because as we mentioned, over 10,000 people, everybody has a different project that they would like to fund. So I think the question there, there has to be limits. Keeping taxes as low as possible, nobody likes to pay taxes, but as Tony mentioned, we, our levy rate here in Pella is very favorable. It's been very good for a number of years. So I think a goal, and I think that has probably sparked some of the business growth that we have had in this area because of that. So I think keeping at that level is important. As for projects, it's pretty easy. If you want something, you usually have to give something up here. So it really becomes just a matter of prioritizing which we want to give up and which we want to take on.
Thank you.
This is the issue we faced last year. I think we were thrown close to a dozen projects, projects that people wanted. And we ended up, I think, funding about two of those and we ended up delaying. For example, we partially funded Wonderspelen and that is now well on its way. And the group that Kiwanis Park raised a great deal of that fund. We had a number of streets in town that did not get paved. We still don't have the wildlife fence at the airport, although that is finally getting built. So I know a lot of times we get people saying, "Why don't we have this finished yet?" And it's, again, we have had the $10.20 levy for 17 consecutive years. So when we have people say, "My project has not been completed," this is one of the reasons. I'm not going to use any particular project, but I will ask this of Robin. Would you fund each suggested project or how would you choose? Or would you like to keep your taxes low?
Well, I think Pella's been very fiscally responsible and that's, again, one of the benefits of living here. I think in a good strategic plan, and I know Pella has one, that we put in there what needs to be done, that we know has to be infrastructure and such in a timeline. But I think throughout there, we have the opportunity to add in some of our projects that our citizens are asking us for. I think that it's up to us to be fiscally responsible with that tax dollar and to take care of our people, but know that we are trying, but everything can't be done tomorrow. And I find people to be reasonable and understand that.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickray. Do you have anything to say there?
Sure. So, in the last several years that I've been at Pella Corporation, one of the things I've learned is that you will never have enough money, you will never have enough time, and you will never have enough people. And so the only thing that you can do is prioritize. And what I think's important for the elected official of Ward Two to remember is that you represent the needs and wants of the people of your ward. And so if we can find a way to continuously get a higher volume of feedback from people in our ward to understand what priorities are going to be important to them, what priorities are important to the city, and then share transparent feedback back out into the community to say, "Here's why we have to fund this $5 million project versus, you know, these few other projects that the residents are asking for." I think the residents will understand why things have to be prioritized in the way that they do.
Thank you. Mrs. Pickray, do you have a question or oppose your remarks?
I do have a question. And so I had, as I've been out talking to the community, one of the interesting things that I have heard is that people still, even months later, are expressing questions and disappointment over the brewery that was supposed to come to Pella that never got passed. And so one of the questions that I had had, I suppose this is more for Mr. Van Stryland, is if you can explain what your position was on that brewery and to having that brewery in the central business district and kind of what happened there and why you got that brewery and we didn't.
Actually, your information is a little bit incorrect there. We had the two liquor places that were allowed downtown. We actually did allow the brewery to take place in Pella. They had a site, but they were trying to decide on a site and they never picked a site. And in the meantime, they went to Newark. We did approve the brewery.
Not in the central business district.
Not in the central business district. With the way it was set up with the ordinances, it was largely a parking issue. And that there already is the peanut pub and the wine place downtown and we already have a parking issue. But we did approve the brewery, but it was not a downtown issue. So they were authorized to go ahead with the brewery. And then they were going to pick a site, but they never did pick a site. Actually, I think they have a site that is picked out on the western end of town. There, we are fighting with what used to be called Central Iowa, now it's the IRUA. And they're struggling with getting water to that particular site. It's been approved, they just haven't built it.
We got to remind you to keep your questions 30 seconds and your answers to them, and if you can, please. Did anybody else from the Ward Two candidates want to answer that question?
I don't feel like I should answer that. I didn't have any part of that decision-making. I don't know how Mr. Van Stryland feels.
No, I would just say that parking was a big issue. Many towns our size would love to have a parking problem. So that probably is where the next focus should be on. If there are businesses that want to come into the downtown area or steaming them because of a parking problem, then I think we really just have to focus on solving that parking issue.
Thank you, Mr. Banstrup. Do you have a question for your remarks?
I have a question. It's Nicole's turn. Nicole, as a city councilman or councilwoman, we know that a large part of our job on city council will be to advance Pella. What have you specifically done prior to this to advance Pella?
Yeah, so I have been given opportunities within the community to get out and talk with people. And I think at this point, what I'm really looking for is the opportunity to help advance Pella through that sort of leadership mentality. This is all new to me, which I think is as much of a benefit as anything, bringing new thinking and new ideas. So while there isn't, I've been at Pella for about three and a half years as a resident and this is my first opportunity to serve the community and I really look forward to that and would take that as a challenge.
I'll go last. Go ahead, Mr. Van Stryland.
I ask my question.
Do you want to answer this question?
Mr. Banstrup, do you have an answer?
What was that? What was your specific question?
As a city councilman, we know that a large part of our job on city council is advancing Pella. What have you specifically done to advance Pella?
Well, I think we've done a great deal with working with, right now, we're working with many housing issues. We have the South Main Development, the Gen Link Conference. We worked a great deal with the Vermeer Reconstruction, Boss Ridge, Prairie Ridge, the Layley Corporation Headquarters with many of the TIF things. And so I think we've worked with our businesses in their development. We've worked with many, many housing projects. One of the big things is the LMI, the Low and Moderate Income, which, you know, sometimes is a struggle because not everybody makes the big bucks. And so we're trying to work with providing income which is, with housing, which is more affordable for those people who aren't in those upper income brackets. We have many things that are actually going on that we've worked with in the last eight years.
Robin, would you answer?
Yes, I've served on lots of boards and commissions as well. A lot of them have been in Mahaska County, which is interesting because Pella has now tripped into Mahaska County with part of the footprint- with part of the footprint of Pella in Muhaska County. Two that come to mind, I've served on the Muhaska County Community Foundation and the Muhaska County Revolving Loan Fund, which provides some gap financing for startup businesses. As for Pella, the one board that I have been on, that was on the longest, was the Garden Chapel Funeral Board, which was a very unique institution because it was one of the last funeral cooperatives in Iowa. And we helped shepherd that from a cooperative into private ownership with us putting the funds from that sale into the Pella Community Foundation so that can have a long-lasting effect on the community for many years to come.
Thank you. And did you have a question for your opponents?
Yeah, I'll maybe follow up a little bit on what Nicole asked on something past, a controversial issue. We've talked, we've seen a lot of press about the disc golf course. And the main thing I would say, if we could have a do-over on that, is the process that we did the right process? Or would we do some things differently on that? So just go up the way down.
Sure. So as far as the disc golf course specifically, I haven't been involved in that decision-making or... And there, what I would say is that aren't we evaluating opportunities for new types of businesses to come to Pella to serve and give the kind of amenities that we're looking for that would recruit young professionals, that would be interesting to young families? And I think a disc golf course answers that. I personally am not into disc golf, I hate to admit. If anybody's thinking it might be, I'm not. But I think if we do have people in our community that are interested in that, we should look at a process that allows those things to come together.
When I was first at the city council meeting and heard that this was a kind of a controversial topic, I looked at the people on both sides of the argument and was somewhat sad because there were people on both sides of the argument that I value very much in Pella. So what did I do? I went to Chris and I said, Chris, isn't there an answer that will make everyone happy? And I specifically asked him, if you could find another area that was similar, would you move? And he said, certainly. I think it's as easy as those conversations to avoid the tension that has risen. So I think, again, we've learned a lesson and in the future, maybe that question gets asked first.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Ward Four candidates now.
Uh, I probably, yeah, there's going to be a study in the spring.
I didn't mean to drop you. I didn't mean to drop you. I'm sorry.
That's fine. There's going to be a study in the spring because there are definitely residents in the Red Rock, Big Rock areas that are very disappointed that it was built. And there will be a committee that will be studying this, looking into it. I'm fairly certain that there will be no more holes built out there. I probably shouldn't say that definitively, but there will be a study as to where we're going to go with this in the future. And I think a lot of people feel this probably wasn't the place to build it. And money was basically given to build the disc golf in Big Rock Park. And I think a lot of people feel there's probably a place for it, but Big Rock Park probably wasn't the place for it.
Thank you very much. Now we have the Ward Four candidates. I'll let Mr. Hart give us the first question.
It's my turn already.
Yes.
Dave, the only question I really have to use, I've already talked with the regular average joes. And they have told me what they think is affordable housing in Pella. I'm just going to ask you the question, what do you consider affordable housing in Pella?
Sure. So the housing issue is, it's more complex than necessarily just having one price point or one dollar amount that hits targets. What happens in housing is, let's say, let's say somebody builds a big house, a nice house, a $500,000-plus house, they move out of their $300,000 house. And then somebody moves out of their $200,000, somebody moves out of their $100,000 house. And then it creates, it creates a value chain all the way up that allows people, people to step into houses that they otherwise wouldn't have been able to. So it's as much about options in Pella as it is about affordability. So with more options, it creates opportunity all the way from the lower ends to the higher end of housing.
And Mr. Hopkins, you have a question for Mr. Hart?
You bet. What is something that you've done in the community that you're most proud of?
Well, let's, well, let's see. Something I've done in the community I'm most proud of? I've been a business owner, two different businesses, I've owned two different businesses. I'm very proud of how each of them worked out. Like I said, I help a lot of people here in the community just because I can. There's really not anything I can really put a finger on that I'm most proud of. I'm most proud of being the fact that I'm in the community and doing what I can to help people.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, I'll turn it over to the mayoral candidates. Mr. DeWort, do you have a question for Mr. Skibum?
Yeah, no disrespect, but I have to look at Bruce when I ask him a question. So related to economic development, the city as a municipality has a few tools and it's a tool belt that can spur and help economic development. My question is, anytime you talk about a development or there's some risk, inherent risk involved in developments, do you feel it's ever appropriate for the city to be on the front end of accepting some of that risk to get a project off the ground, up and running? As opposed to waiting for private investment to come in and then reacting to what the private investment side of it is doing? Do you feel the city should be out the front, ever be out the front on some of those things?
Yeah, I think the cities, in my opinion, the city's main purpose is to make sure that we provide lights for its citizens, water for its citizens, sewer, parks, et cetera. As far as development, I think that is a development, a developer's step to take up first. The city certainly should involve in any way, shape, or form that it can enhance the developer's options. But that, I think you're asking if the city has an opportunity that we should plow in taxpayers' monies to help a developer develop. I don't agree with that. We will certainly collaborate with the developer. But we are held accountable by the citizens to the citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Skibum, do you have a question for Mr. DeWort?
Yes. You know, you have spoken of your participation in development projects in our community over the years with some negotiations with the city of Pella currently in process. My question to you is, if elected mayor, where will your allegiance lie? With your business entanglements or with the best interest of the citizens' vote?
Yes, it's true. I am involved in a few of the development projects that are in the process. And obviously, if I'm elected mayor, I certainly would have to recuse myself from certain discussions on certain projects. I still, you know, would want to have, you know, some input into, if I think, to give an opinion when it comes down to making some final decisions on, you know, how the city is going to participate. I obviously would not be able to do that as mayor of any project that I'm involved in. And I would be totally transparent with any project where, if I do have a financial stake in it and where I stand. I would assume that as a mayor, doesn't mean I can't conduct business. So...
Thank you. We'll move on to the large candidates. Chris Myers, I'll let you have the first question.
Yeah, definitely. So my main question after review of the facility needs assessment, what is your opinion on the facility that needs to be the top of this? And what's that one, your something first, I guess?
Okay. All right. You're right. The facility study is a pretty healthy vote. Needs for our community, we need public works that updates. Our electric department is busting at the seams from cold storage to their actual facility with the development of our telecom utility that's coming onboard that's going to have significant impact in the community. That's going to require facilities. City Hall, to be quite honest with you, is nearly at capacity. So to your point, there are lots of things that rank right up there. If I think about the things that impact the community the most in the next couple of years, it's definitely going to be the telecom utility. And so making sure that we have the right infrastructure, the right people in place, the ability to support it and a facility to house it in is probably at the top of my list.
Thank you.
Sorry. Just an alert to Tony. I agree. I reviewed the facilities report as well. And it's clear that with that great telecom project that is coming in, and by the way, thank you for your work in making that happen, we're going to have new bodies in town that are going to be involved with that project. They're going to need space. City Hall definitely needs a redo or a makeover in certain ways as do the different facilities that we have. I think there was a list of eight buildings that were all listed and all have significant needs in that report. So I, yeah, I would say primarily City Hall and being able to take care of that telecom project that will be a priority.
Thank you. And Mr. Boghoven, do you have a question?
Sure. I have one for each of them. Is that okay?
That's fine.
All right. So this will start with you.
Yeah, sure.
So the city council continues to be questioned about the brewery and Nicole brought that up just a little bit ago, and the fact that it's located in Newton. My question to you is, are you aware of the steps, the processes, the timeline that E and Z, the mayor and council, put into that project to approve it, to make it an opportunity for the citizens of Pella? And if so, what was that process?
Well, I don't have the exact dates and timeline like you were mentioning. I am aware that there were a number of steps that were put in place and I recognize that there is a significant process. And I think that it's good in a way that our city council does have a process to have in place, that we can bring in the right businesses, the right, and how can we encourage that? However, I think that that process itself became too much to take on and that's where the frustration came. And so I think how, this situation went beyond the brewery. It's how can the city council work to clearly articulate those steps from the very beginning? And then how can they encourage and walk alongside different businesses that are coming into place? And I would say that it wasn't clear from the very beginning. And that's where I think there would be a clearer opportunity in the future for other businesses.
Chris, a question for you. As council members, we're charged with being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars. The county is currently working on a project of the city of Knoxville to purchase the VA campus and then provide it to the city of Knoxville. Considering that roughly 61% of the county's funding comes from the city of Pella, how would you justify to the community that that is a wise way of spending their tax dollars?
I can't speak for the, what the city of Knoxville plans on doing that with that parcel. I do believe that there are certain entities that are actively involved in wanting a portion of that. From our perspective, it's similar to the perspective of any other project. It's not just in Knoxville alone, as you stated. It seems that a lot of our funding goes to projects throughout Marion County as a whole. So in discussion, you need to review it as the entirety of all projects and not just one specifically. The VA has been discussed on many, many occasions in regards to acquiring land at a certain point in time or how much or anything like that. The federal government, of course, is actually involved with that. So not to deter from that question, but it's more looking at the county as a whole and what that's betting is for, not just that individual parcel. Just because there are portions of that that I know that the Raceway want, which I'm sure you're fully aware of, as well as other aspects such as parks. And those buildings are just a whole different animal in that sense. So...
Thank you. And Mrs. Ford, you have a question for your opponents?
I would actually like to pass. I believe I would, for our time spent, any questions for the audience inside?
Very good. Okay, we'll start with the first audience question. Since, you know, we've brought up parking a couple of times already tonight, do each of you think that there's a real problem with parking downtown? And if so, how would you address or resolve it? I think we'll start with the Ward Four candidates. We'll start with Mr. Hart for his question. Do you think parking is a real problem around town? And if so, how would you work to address it?
Yes, parking around town is an issue. And there are places that the city owns that could be actually converted over to a parking lot and would help alleviate some of the problems with parking uptown. So I don't really, that's probably all I can say for it.
Okay. Mrs. Hopkins?
Yeah, I think, well, parking is, it's not I think, it's parking is an issue uptown. And actually with, there's several new businesses, a lot more... And actually, with, there's several new businesses, a lot more traffic. One business in particular that just opened this past weekend, that's going to bring in on the weekends for events, it's going to have pretty big impact on parking downtown. I believe, and actually I was at one of the city council meetings where a solution was proposed, it's been proposed a few times and gone through a few stages for extra parking. And at the time that it was proposed, even though it was mentioned that parking is an issue, it was tabled.
Okay, Mr. Myers?
Yeah, definitely parking is an issue downtown, but it's also an issue in quite a few different areas. We have taken into consideration that there are lots, there are spots on the north side of the square, as much as I hate to say I'm one of those people that want to park right in front of the building, that I'm going to, but there are additional spots available throughout the central business district. City Council has proposed additional parking, and it actually is going into place next to, to the east of the police station currently, where that yellow house sits. That house will be removed, I believe, for the next city council session is what was discussed. And additional parking is placed. We do have to remember that the Oostport Alley project is also being continued, and so parking isn't just going to be a small-time issue, it's going to be for a few years to come as we fix the Oostport Alleyway, as well as putting water retention underneath that 48-hour lot. So as we know there is an issue, there are things that can be addressed, but it's just a continuing conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Bocko?
Sure. Thanks, Steve. Yeah, parking is definitely an issue downtown. Coming from someone that actually shops in our community, I've spent a lot of time driving around the block and parking the block or two away and then walking downtown, and so that is a real issue. As Chris mentioned, with the purchase of the Second Reformed Church property there, as we continue to plan for the future, which is what we're tasked with doing, there will be a parking lot put there before the other parking lot is removed, so that there's a bit of a transition there. As David mentioned, there was another project that was talked about at one time to go right across from the Town Crier in the form of a parking ramp. Ideas like that are being kicked around. I'm actually meeting with the Historic Retailers Group to discuss their ideas for parking solutions. So while it's not something that's going to happen in the next 30 or 60 days, parking is on the front of our minds, and it's definitely something that we're trying to take care of with her.
First of all, I think a bustling community is not a problem. Can we take a minute to celebrate the fact that we have a wonderful downtown area with great businesses that are drawing so many people? And I think that's something that we're always going to face. If you go to any community that's a destination, parking is always a problem. And I would rather that parking is a problem versus there being too many open spots in front of the business. That said, there are, as all of these gentlemen have mentioned, there are a number of opportunities that are already being pursued. So whatever community the city can do to help create spaces to enable our people to be able to come shop, and not just our people in Pella, but visitors and others coming to our community as well.
Thank you. Nicole?
So I think one of the advantages that we have as a community is that we are a very walkable community, but I, you know, I agree, being able to park right in front of the building is very nice, especially when you don't have to get your kids out and drag them down the street, too. But having parking available, whether it's on the north side of the square, or if it looks like a ramp, I think are opportunities that the city council should explore. Are there other innovative ways that we can make it fun for, as tourists come in? Can we shuttle them on a trolley? And I'm throwing ideas, but are there things that we can do as a community that contribute to our culture and what we're known for, that also address a parking problem? Parking ramp is very practical. Making sure that it's aesthetically pleasing would be ideal, although I don't think I've ever seen a pretty parking ramp, so we could work on that, but there's opportunity there.
I hear there are pretty parking ramps in Iowa City, because I've asked that question. I have high hopes that when we start to phase the city's ownership of Second Christian Reformed, we see a lot of improvement through that, through the first phase, and then the second phase ultimately, when the church will relocate. So I think there's work in progress to help alleviate some of the parking issues.
I'm not trying to avoid the question, but I agree. I think Liz said, be glad we have people shopping in Pella. I have a relative in business in another city that said in our town, I shoot a cannon down Main Street and not anything or anybody on a Saturday, and we do have people shopping. We have discussed some parking options, and we are working on some parking, but we do have a problem. I do have to make one correction. It's Ostport for those people who still speak Dutch. Anyway, yeah, we have been dealing with some issues, but yeah, we have some parking issues to deal with, and we have been working on some, but it is going to be tricky next summer when we start working with the Ostport Alley and we start closing a lot of spaces in that parking lot across from the Town Crier.
Go ahead.
Yep, so I'll be the ninth person to say in the road, yes, there is a parking concern that we have, and yes, I'm glad that it's a problem that we have. Just to add to that, I think the opportunity to pursue the ramp across west from the Town Crier is a very interesting concept to me, and I think that'd be well worthwhile to put plenty of resources into exploring that and then taking the risk of pursuing it if it seems feasible.
So I might be a little bit different, but I would like to make sure we really do have a parking problem. As a guy who's downtown every day and who's uptown a lot of nights, I see a whole lot of parking spaces that aren't utilized in both of those situations. Now, our mentality here is that we need to park right in front of a place we're going to visit. How many of you go to Des Moines and go to a restaurant or somewhere else and you're off six blocks to get there? If you want to go to Georgia's and have a pizza like I do once a week, if I parked in front of the post office to get there, it's a block and a half. That's not a real long way to walk. And so I think a lot of it is perception, and parking is very, very expensive. And so I think we need to really make sure that we have a serious parking problem before we spend a lot of our money, you know, enhancing the parking. I think when it's smart to do it, yes, you can always use more. But I've been in business in Oskaloosa, in Knoxville, in Preston, in Chertan, Boone, and the Mars, and Cherokee.
Mr. DeWort, do you have a question?
None of those communities have a parking problem where they wish they had.
Mr. DeWort? Sorry, I got to cut you off there. Mr. Skibum?
Yeah, I'm going to piggyback onto what Donna said a little bit. We do have the mentality in town that we have to pull into a parking spot right by the store. Why it was not open, we'll go around the block and try another time. I've done some traveling, and I'm amazed how we have become spoiled and how much, it's been to be a pedestrian society. And I would like to do some bold thinking, maybe even closing the street off and making it a pedestrian causeway, and making possible to have adequate parking at the end of it. Let's enhance a more walking mentality rather than a mobile drive, have to park right in front. That's what I'd like to see in the future.
Okay. We're going to ask this quick audience question, then we're going to take a quick five-minute break, let the candidates refresh a little bit and cool off. It's pretty warm up here. So, okay, this question is, at times, the council meetings have gotten a reputation not being open or civil toward differing viewpoints. First of all, do you subscribe to that notion? And if so, how would you put the civil back in civil service and improve the openness of the meetings? And we'll start with Robin Falskraft with the board of two candidates.
Thank you. I haven't felt that citizens aren't heard. I've sat through quite a few council meetings, and they do have the open forum. I know that's not comfortable for everyone to do, but I think that, again, the fact that we are approachable, people that are not comfortable coming and doing a three-minute talk at the city council meeting should certainly feel at comfort level with calling any of us and saying, this is what I'd like to bring to the table. And I think it's our responsibility to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Van Stram.
Besides the open forums at every meeting, I get a lot of emails. You know, people go to the City of Pella website. I get emails, I get phone calls, we're reachable. I get stopped on the street. I get people that I think are somewhat old, and I suddenly realize they're former students of mine that I don't recognize because they've grown here, lost here, and so I get a lot of people that stop me on the street, stop me in Ivy, stop me in restaurants. I get asked a lot of questions. I don't get the idea that we're not approachable.
Okay, Mr. Van Stram?
Yes, I'd have to probably agree with that. I'd be surprised to hear that if the city council members were not approachable. I think that the key is just to be able to listen. Sometimes that's personally hard to do if you've kind of made up your opinion and somebody comes to you with a completely different approach, then sometimes you brush them off. But I think that the willingness to listen is going to be something that's very important, and I think the city by and large, the members do that.
Thank you. Mrs. McRae?
Sure, I would say making sure that the community knows that they can utilize the open forum, getting that message out so that people know that they are welcome at council meetings and can be heard. I think the majority of the Pella community knows and understands that, but just making it a more comfortable scenario, or maybe people can write in questions similar to how they're doing tonight, ask questions, via email. I'm getting emails already with questions, and so just being an approachable council member, I think is important.
Thank you. Mrs. Ford?
Yeah, I think that there is a perception that city council is difficult to work on a day, and we know, we've said it before, whether that perception is true or not, it can become reality. And so I think it's important to be very, very careful and to really open those communication pathways. And yes, the city council meetings exist as that opportunity, but I think really making an effort to connect the community and at different levels of the community. I think creating that open communication as well, what is the city council proactively doing to share their message of what they're doing, what they're trying to get out and get across, and allowing that feedback to come back to them?
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Definitely from a city council meeting perspective, I've sat through multiple meetings where multiple individuals have been able to express themselves, and I've also sat through meetings where no one has said anything during the forums before and after. There's plenty of opportunities to speak your mind by email, phone call, text, and at city council meetings. They're not a group, or we're not a group to judge you. You are a citizen, and you have your concerns, and you write your opinion, but you need to present those in a way that will be correlated correctly, I would say, not attacking, not demeaning, anything like that. And I think that's the stigma that comes to it as well. We're here to listen, and you have multiple opportunities through all those channels, but definitely the open speaking portions, in both city councils, there's two of them, if you have not been able to attend, but they're crucial to get communication and information across.
Thank you. Mr. Bocko?
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, I agree with a lot of what everyone has said. I think for some folks, it's probably hard to get their point across in three minutes because it's, there's a lot of anxiety. I sit there and watch people tapping their foot, waiting to ask their question, because, you know, it's maybe a bit intimidating. So I think it's important to continue to encourage that people reach out to the forums. There's lots of ways to contact a council member, contact the mayor, and so to continue to be proactive in doing that. And then, you know, I think the other thing that's important to remember is sometimes questions are asked at council meetings by citizens that expect an answer right there, and that's probably not ever going to happen, just because there's a lot of process to making decisions, and one person on the council can't speak for everyone. So I think it's just a little education on how the process works, and then continuing to encourage people to reach out.
Thank you. Mr. Harkins?
Well, if the people feel like they are being ignored in an open meeting, then we as a united council need to fix that, correct that problem. They, we need to listen to them, be more transparent, and make sure that everybody has an equal voice.
Thank you. Mr. Harkins?
I, oh, a few months ago, I had the opportunity to present an idea to the city council that I assumed that the council actually agreed with, and they were cordial with me and all that, and I was still nervous, and I'm not generally a nervous person. So I can appreciate that it might be intimidating for folks to, you know, come up in a public meeting and talk about something they care about, and they sure hope doesn't get rejected just offhand. I think there's, that's one way, that's one avenue, like several folks have said here. If we're truly representatives of our community, and we truly have the best interest of our community in mind, we're going to be available in times that aren't just in the limelight and in the spotlight, but also on the street, in a restaurant, at the store, that kind of thing.
Thank you. Mr. Skibum?
Representing the constituents of the Third Ward is my number-one priority, and I don't know of an email or a phone call that I will not respond back to. And not always in a timely matter because everybody's busy, but I will respond. Sometimes the line of civility gets crossed slightly, and that makes it difficult for council to react in an appropriate way. But I don't think, as council, we maybe seem intimidating, but that is not the intent. We want to do and represent the citizens of Pella. That's our duty, that's our task, and that's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Well, I could only speak to this issue from personal experience, and I don't think it's true. Every time I've tried to have a discussion with somebody, they're more than willing to have a discussion. As mayor, I would want to make sure that everybody knew that, you know, we were open to people to come and talk. Now, that doesn't mean I'm going to agree with you, and sometimes when you ask a question and you don't get the answer you want, your response is, you didn't listen to me. So there's a difference between listening and responding. And so, again, I can only speak from personal experience. I have not felt like you weren't heard, I wasn't heard if I had an issue.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to take a quick five-minute break. So I've already asked all these candidates about their thoughts on the airport, but I've got a few more requests for it to be asked again. You may have missed my articles on MarionCountyTribune.com. So, Mr. Van Stram, what are your thoughts on the proposed airport?
Well, the airport is an issue that obviously needs to be addressed, but we have now, where we're at right now, we've got a situation where two lawsuits are going on in which Pella, one is the plaintiff, and the other case, it's the defendant, involving the landowners there. So despite what I, I see a lawyer or two in the crowd here, but not wanting to pay attorney's fees, there is going to be one good thing about the resolution of this, is that there's been a lot of accusations of things were not done properly, they were not done in the right order, they were not done fairly. I think once you go through the lawsuit process, that we will know what was done right and not done well, and go forward from there. If Pella prevails in the suits, then I think in good conscience, the city can go forward with what they have. If Pella doesn't win the lawsuits, then I think we have to use it as a learning experience and find out what we missed and then start over.
Robin Falskraft, please.
I agree with Mr. Van Stram, but I had a, I stayed for a city council meeting a couple weeks ago and had a kind of a different opinion. The gentleman who runs the airport was there and talked about the dire straits that the airport is in, and I know a lot of people say it's made it all these years, it's fine. I don't, I don't think it's fine, and I think no matter what, something will have to be done. I'm like Calvin, I believe we ride out and see what happens with these lawsuits and see if there is a decision to be made.
Thank you. Mr. Van Stram?
Yes, I think sometimes people forget that Oskaloosa originally asked us to go in with them. You know, other than that, we probably would have stayed with the Otley site. SCRA this time has negotiated its first real estate purchase. You know, FFA has thrown money into the project. We look at another airport in Iowa, Sioux City and Sioux Center and Orange City have benefited greatly from that airport. I think a lot of people forget about the safety standards that I think a lot of people forget about the safety standards that, you know, are not met at our current airport because of the shorter runway. So I think one of those lawsuits has actually gone against the landowners who have agreed to sell. So it's a messy situation, so I guess right now, we wait to see what happens with the lawsuits.
Mrs. Pickering?
Sure. So I would echo what the other candidates have said, that it's not an easy process and it's not cut and dry, but at the end of the day, we have to have a safe airport that supports our businesses in town. If we don't, it poses not only a safety risk, but it makes it difficult for our businesses to do business here. We have to be able to get in suppliers, we have to be able to get in vendors, we have to be able to get in VIPs and all of those things, not only for places like Appella Corporation, but for other big stakeholders in town as well. And this airport is a significant part of that. So supporting the airport, I think, is something that we need to move forward with.
Thank you. Mr. Baco?
Yeah, so I would disagree with one thing Mr. Benstrom said, starting over is not an option. Safety needs to be the number one priority at Appella Airport, and it's not about somebody that's got a bigger airplane than someone else. To Nicole's point, we have to do business, but we have to do it safely. And if you ask the pilots that fly in and out of Appella, they tell you that that's the most dangerous airport that they fly in and out of in a day's time. So I hope that none of us ever have to stand before a TV camera and talk about why an airplane didn't successfully land at Appella Airport. We're purchasing land, there are landowners coming forward voluntarily, they're not being strong-armed to sell their property, so that's a good thing. And I think the frustrating part is the time it's taking to get this done. Dealing with the Mahaska County Board of Supervisors, in all due respect, has been a lot like the kid that can't get his way. Every time there's new board supervisors, they want to start over again, and they don't, some want it, some don't. And the ship has sailed. The process is in place, the City of Oskaloosa is behind it 100%, and we need to keep moving forward for the safety of our community and the safety of those pilots that fly in and out of Appella Airport.
Mrs. Ford?
Yeah, so I actually grew up on Century Farm in Mahaska County, so I respect and I understand and I feel the passion that those landowners have. It's a legacy that they have and that belongs to them. However, we look at what we want to do in the future. We want to keep our communities growing and much as the Romney have said, that we need it to continue growth, our businesses need it. And so we need to be able to do it safely, we need to be able to do it efficiently, we need to be able to do it effectively. And really by bringing two communities together to be able to serve a greater region, in the end, we're going to be really empowering everyone around us to really drive progress.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
Definitely, I can't speak for the future airport just because previous city councils as well as mayor have signed up a dotted line. Our hands are tied as a new generation of council members, just because those agreements were in place before our time. What we can speak to is the current airport that we have with the runway that was formed in 1967. There is a repair work happening that'll be coming up in this next year for something that's long overdue. As Tony said, it is, it can be considered one of the worst runways in our area for sure. So safety is top priority, not only for our industries, but we have a lot of private and personally owned planes in our community and people who take pride in aviation. Other initiatives such as the fence that is being installed with the help of the FAA just to help regulate wildlife control and everything like that needs to be taken into consideration. So just in regards to safety overall, but for the future airport, everything has been signed and completed.
Thank you. Mr. Delord?
Yeah, the easy thing for us to say is that, you know, we don't have to tell you what we think because I think it's moving forward, it's going to happen, there probably isn't anything we can do. I think from an economic development standpoint, I think it'll be a big shot in the arm for economic development in this area. And so, you know, if I were, had been on the council in the last few years when the airport was a discussion and decisions were made, I would have been in support of a new airport.
Thank you. Mrs. Skiba?
Yeah, this is a posterity issue in my mind. You know, we've got two world-class businesses that are in our community, and they don't want to have to take your shoes off to go fly somewhere. Air travel is worth, how can you do business? And so I'm looking 50 years down the road. Do I want my grandkids, my kids and my grandkids, to have employment in this community? Yes, I do. And I think air travel is vital to these businesses. So I'm fully supportive of it. I know 18 years ago, when I first got on council, was one of the first meetings that I went to. It's a long process and probably rightly so, but I think we're going to move forward and I'm pretty confident that it will be an important part of travel for our businesses in the future to come.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Yeah, I'll piggyback off Bruce a second. We've got more than two world-class businesses in town, we have several. But from a standpoint of an airport, the question that I'll ask with this issue, with any issue, is going to be what decision benefits the most people to the fullest? So my opinion, and to echo what most everyone says, the decision here is absolutely, we need a regional airport. We've got, we've got the need and it's going to benefit a lot of people because of it.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Well, I'm not going to debate whether it's a want or a need, but I will ask the question that, first I'll state that they are already a few years behind schedule. And with the addition of six new lawsuits added in August of this year, the question then becomes, is it going to be cost-effective even considering any longer? Or should we start exploring other options, stop wasting the taxpayers' money to, on something that may or may not ever happen simply because of the new lawsuits? So, you know, I don't know, I can't really say for sure which we should do, but my honest opinion is it's a want and not a need.
Thank you very much. For this next question, Mr. Myers, one of the members of the audience hears complaints about difficulty working with some of the lower boards like the Community Services Board, Planning and Zoning, et cetera. Have you heard anything like that? And if so, how would you handle a situation if a constituent brought a concern of one of those boards to you?
I don't think there's concern working with any board. I've attended quite a few meetings in the past few months from various boards. I myself, as many of you are aware, did a presentation, was involved actively in a presentation, giving the Community Services Board, Historic Preservation Board, Planning and Zoning, all of those ideas and everything. They're very open. There's not many people that attend, and there is an opportunity for everyone to speak their mind and present what they feel is necessary. So I don't feel that there is a correlation between that opinion that boards and groups are hard to work with, just because if you put the effort and the passion into it, they'll understand and put their efforts. Those people volunteer their time, they're there for a reason because it's something they're passionate and want to see the community of Appella grow up.
Thank you, Mr. Baco.
Yeah, to echo a couple of Chris's comments there, there are groups of volunteers that love our community and they love to give back, and that's their way to do it. And, you know, from a council resource, they're invaluable. There's lots of times where we're reaching out to those board members or they're reaching out to us to discuss issues, ideas that have come forward. So I wouldn't necessarily agree that they're hard to work with. I think because they want to do things right and they don't want to tell citizens something incorrectly. Again, it goes back to, a lot of folks want instant gratification and want the answer right now, and sometimes that just doesn't happen. So I think we're very lucky to have the boards that we have and the folks that volunteer on them.
Thank you. Mrs. Ford?
Yeah, to echo some of these guys' comments, those boards exist for a reason, and I think that they play an important role in our community. And I think this really comes back down to, again, communication. What can we do to truly open those lines of communication? I would bet more often than not, it's miscommunication that is getting in the way. So as, how can we make things more transparent? What are ways that you can connect with the people on those boards? And how can you move forward together? I think that's going to be really the big question of how can we bring those together to improve those relationships?
Thank you. Mrs. Pickering?
I don't think there's anything that I can say that hasn't been said already. The people who sit on those boards are volunteers, they're there to hear those concerns, and if there's a more approachable way to reach those people or to share their concerns or share ideas, then that's something that they need to hear from the community, that we need to hear from the community. How is it that you want to be heard? An open forum is not a comfortable situation if you prefer one-on-one. I'm sure that all of those people are open to different formats for feedback and for communication, but that's just something we would need to hear from the community. How do you want to give that feedback and continue to just, you know, utilize resources to get to ask questions and get messages out?
Okay, Mrs. Falskraff?
I am happy to hear it because I'm on planning and zoning. So I think that we are pretty receptive to people that come to us. So I think whether it be in the format of the meeting or people calling us or stopping us, I have never heard someone say to me that we have not been heard. So I, speaking for my fellow committee members, I think you can do a good job of listening.
Mr. Benstrom?
I don't hear a lot of complaints. I hear sometimes people that may not totally agree with all of the decisions that are made, but I think the boards and the services and so on feel that they're heard. I mean, we get a lot of people that volunteer, the Historical Society and Historic Preservation. I mean, we have people that hours and hours of work and that work well with other people in the community, so I guess I don't see this as a major complaint. I'm not exactly sure where they're coming from or which people they're referring to.
Okay, Mr. Benstrom?
Yeah, I have to echo everything that was said here as well, too. As you know, Bank Iowa just recently built on the northeast side of the square on the old cases facility, and everybody had some angst over the evil Dutch front committee. But that was not anything to deal with at all. Those folks were extremely helpful and our organization had no issues with them at all. So I would say if that mirror is the other ones, then it should be bear little complaints about that.
Okay, Mr. Delord?
Again, I could only speak to this subject from personal experience, and I haven't experienced, you know, that. I served on the Board of Adjustments for a number of years, a few years ago. I think sometimes with government, you know, there's a lot of steps that have to take place to make sure things are done right. So I think a lot of times, it's a timing, as Tony has said before, people like an answer right now, but it's not always that easy to do it right now. So I think, I just can't imagine we have people volunteering on these boards that are not willing to listen to people. Sometimes it takes some time to get answers, and that frustrates people, you know, sometimes.
Mr. Skiba?
Our committees are a backbone of, that's where all the trenches, the work in the trenches is done, is by our committees. And it's done by peers, by our citizens. So when you come and go to the Board of Adjustment, you are talking to your peers. I think they do really a phenomenal job. Where the problem maybe comes is if they are following ordinances or whatever is in place, and the people don't necessarily get the answer that they want, well, then it's not a good board member. But they take their positions seriously, and I, you know, I extend them, I salute them for their efforts and their work.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Well, having dealt with planning and zoning on a few occasions, I have to admit that there are times they are very difficult to work with. I will also say that maybe we need to review what they're using for policies, regulations, and take a look, because there might be some that are obsolete, some that could be modified, some that could be eliminated, because I don't feel that anybody in planning and zoning should be telling somebody who's private property they want to paint, that they can't do it because it's not the right shade. So I think we need to review that and all the policies they're looking at and kind of rework the whole system.
Thank you, Mr. Baco.
Well, I hope you don't move next to me and paint your house paint. I would ask the question, if folks think that any number of the committees are difficult to work with, I would want to know if they were turned down? And if it's sour grapes and the committee was just following the rules and doing what they were supposed to do in upholding our standards as a community?
Thank you. And this next question, I apologize I haven't been down lately, but given the amount of evaluation of property at Appella that is not taxable, you know, including Central College, the hospital, the churches, city property, et cetera, which we're blessed to have all of that, nevertheless, that leaves a lot of burden left on taxable property. So how would you propose maintaining the current levy if the property evaluations of what we have that's taxable no longer goes up? We'll start with you, Ms. Pickering.
Well, well, we have to, like you said, we have to look through it, be thorough, find out why certain places are tax exempt, why certain places are not, and look over the whole situation, review it, and then see if we come up with some solutions, some solutions so that either we make it fair for everybody or we, you know, lower taxes and see what happens.
Mr. Hawkins?
Well, there's two different things at play. As probably most of you know, the taxable value of our houses and businesses went up recently, most of us. The benefit of a tax levy is that it's a percentage, so as our houses, as our businesses appreciate, so does the tax revenue for the city. So that's one thing. The tax, if the levy never changes, but our houses keep growing in value, our businesses keep growing in value, the tax generated, the property tax, is going to continue to go up. Secondly, more houses, it's just math. If we add more housing, we're going to add more to our tax base, and it's going to be a win-win.
Okay. Mr. Skiba?
Yes, the city is number three on the list of participants in your tax that you pay out of real estate. We have not raised the tax. Our mill rate has been 1020 for the last 18 years. And that can change when you think about the amount of services that have expanded, I think 18 years ago, before the sports parks, and I think the bike path was just beginning then. And our property values have gone up also, so that counters offsets it. But our property tax just went up, has not been from the city. And I think that we do a pretty good job when, as far as efficiency between departments and with help that's involved, I think we run a pretty tight ship.
Yeah, I think we should be thankful that we live in a community where property values do continue to rise. As Bruce said, the tax rate itself has not changed for a long, long time. The City of Appella has one of the lower ones in the state, and so, you know, the tax you pay is the tax rate times the assessed value. The assessed value is determined by the county over at the assessor's office. If you own commercial property in Appella, you experienced a rather large percentage increase there lately, but, you know, I think we should be, feel good about living in a community where property values continue to rise and generate more property tax if we're able to provide the services that we want.
Mrs. Pickering?
So I think it's our community that needs to focus on growth, and we're driving more housing in our community and more businesses in our community and therefore more in our community and more businesses in our community and therefore more contributions to tax in our community. We're going to continue to see the benefits of that through amenities. And I think just being able to prioritize and support how those get spent will be interesting in the next couple of years.
Thank you, Mr. Menstrum.
Obviously, we're not going to change the status quo. This naturally, for a long time, we don't tax schools, churches and that. And then obviously, out in $800,000 houses, we pay a lot more taxes than in $200,000 houses and we can be thankful. You know, we've got a lot of big businesses that pay a lot of taxes. And I think we can be very, very thankful for the amenities we have, the quality of life stuff. I mean, I've talked to people from Des Moines that come to our summer pool here, the sports park and this sort of thing. And we are now in the process of adding the latest $15 million addition. So, I mean, these things are things that, you know, help keep our taxes down. But, yeah, it's, there aren't too many towns that have had our tax rate stay the same for 17 or 18 years. But it's a challenge with all the things that are again being proposed with the community center, the whole facilities study.
Thank you, Mr. Menstrum.
Hey, your question started out with the number of nonprofits, the non-taxable entities in town. And we're enlightened, we looked at that a little bit, there's the ability to charge a utility franchise fee to have revenue be paid for those for the services that they get. We came to the conclusion that the value that these nonprofits get, whether it be the colleges, the college, the schools, the churches and what have you, they provide such a unique benefit to the community. And why didn't we didn't want to do that? And the same would be for here, that in my opinion, that we should not want to try to, we should be thankful for them and not begrudge the taxes they don't pay.
Thank you, Mrs. Paulsger.
I think the one, one of the many things that I'm so proud of Pella is the fiscal responsibility that we've shown for many, many decades. And I think, again, can I say that we'll never increase taxes? I don't think that would be wise. But I do think that following the path of fiscal responsibility that's already been shown is a great example for future boards to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Bacho.
Yeah, I agree with something Mr. Menstrum said, that, you know, we shouldn't hold that against the churches and the schools because we're really fortunate to have those and those are some of the things that set us apart from other communities. But what always makes me chuckle when people complain about taxes is every year we get to go through a book that's at least this thick, this is our budget. And we have to go through there and pick out what we can do and what we'd like to do and what we should wait on doing so that we don't have to increase the taxes in our community. And that's the charge, that's the challenge that we face as council members. So I think we do a pretty good job of that at this point. And as we continue to move forward with regulations and things that people want, that's why we don't just do every single thing that we get asked to as council.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter.
Yeah, I think, let's talk about growth for a minute. You look over the past decade and when you look at the census estimate report, we're actually looking at about a 0.2% decline in our population. So stagnant at best. Well, our costs are going to continue to keep going up. The ideas for this community center that we're sitting in right now, things like that, these costs are going to continue to go up. But if we're losing a taxpayer base, I think that's where we're really going to be in trouble. So if we look at long-term growth, that's necessary for our community so that we can be fiscally insured long into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Yeah, definitely. So as you said, multiple candidates up here said the tax rate from the city has not been raised in 18 years and that's amazing. The tax increase for the real estate side of things, we've seen, was assessed by the county. I know there's some frustration, that means we're growing. We're doing the right things, there aren't many of those things that happen. We have approval projects from the current council for new housing developments which will increase tax revenue on those new homes that are being projected, as well as supplying more homes for people to be able to purchase in our community. Those things correlate over to, the tax income correlates over to services, infrastructure, everything that Tony says in this book, the decisions that are made are crucial, that we need for, to keep our community growing in the path that it's going. So taxing the nonprofits, as Galen said, I don't think it's the best idea because they offer services to our community that people are utilizing and needing.
Thank you.
Okay, as we're talking about the facilities plan and the needs for space to serve different organizations and events around town, of course, you know, we have the theater here. Do you believe that organizations that utilize these facilities should pay a fee and should those fees be reassessed annually by the council to kind of keep up with the cost of delivering that service? Mrs. Pickering.
I think it depends on the organization, right? So if it's a nonprofit organization, then that's going to make a difference, on the fees that we would ask them to use these facilities. These are community service, really. This is where, the theater that we're sitting here is an important community amenity for us to have. And so to ask the people to utilize this to pay a service fee would have to be weighed very carefully. Now, we do need contributions to make sure that financially we can keep up with the building so we can afford renovations and things like that. But we really need to assess how they serve the communities, but find alternative routes around that.
Thank you, Mrs. Paulsger.
As a lover of people, I know there are people even in this community that could not afford a fee to use this facility. And I love the option of grant writing. I am a huge grant writer, I believe in it, and I think that the needs could be met here without charging fees for people to use it. I think that we have a great facility here that we want to make accessible to everyone in every organization that would like to use it.
Thank you, Mr. Menstrum.
Well, if you'd have asked me to pay a fee to come up here in the hot lights and be peppered with these questions, I wouldn't have. So I agree with that. I think we should avoid that if we can. You look at the benefit we as a community, try to provide those with less resources. I think that's a way that we can give back just a bit to those organizations that don't have many resources if we can do that.
Okay, Mr. Menstrum.
Yeah, as a general question, I guess I'd have to say which nonprofit, which group, many of these groups give a great deal to the community, especially Union Street players. I'd hate to charge them money to use this place. They do so much for it, they look after it, they care for it. They do tremendous things for this building and for this community. So I'd probably have to know a little bit more about which group is using it. I'd be pretty hesitant about that.
Okay, Mr. DeWort.
Yeah, I think Nicole said, maybe she was the first, that depending on who it is, you know, we want to try to provide amenities for this community, something that every citizen can enjoy. I think there probably would be opportunity with some of the facilities to charge some fees to for-profit enterprises that want to use them. And if we can do that, you know, if there's some kind of mix, we can help offset the cost of operating the facilities. And so I think it's, you know, there's a way to set some standard practices as far as who is actually using the facilities can help determine the fee or what kind of a fee we can charge.
Thank you, Mrs. Skiba.
I would have to echo many of the comments that were made. It is, can be a difficult issue for social programs, for people that use like this facility. The city is not in the business of making money, but sustaining lifestyles and facilities and infrastructure. And I think that is going to be a struggle for us and probably will continue, but it's something that we evaluate frequently.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
Yeah, I guess I want to look at what the usage is. If there's, whether it's the community center, whether it's a basketball court, whether it's a baseball field, if there's revenue generated, then that burden for the facility can be, want to look at and say, if there's revenue generated, can that be shared, can the cost be shared? If it's a free service, then that the city should justifiably provide, then that's just the cost of being a city and providing services that people need and want.
Mr. Harpkins.
Well, should we review it at least every two years? Yes. Chair of Organizations, we might want to look into see whether or not it's local or an outside source, because the locals, the money's going to be spent in the community. Outside sources, we might get part of it back, but I think overall, review the policy, see what's, we're charging everybody, and maybe even if we had to, go to a flat fee for everybody so it's all equal.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter.
I think it's impossible to really create a blanket statement in regards to this. I think it would definitely be case by case, kind of the situation. However, I did have to make an overall blanket statement, if you will. I'm a huge proponent of experiences and opportunities to get involved in our community, whether that is through plays right here on this stage or a basketball game on a basketball court, Little League or whatnot. I think, how can we make those experiences possible? So is that relying on, I think it's looking at an overall budget. What will it take, you know, from a P and L standpoint to make these opportunities possible? And where can we get those funds and how does that look?
Mr. Bacho.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what's been said here. You know, a lot of the things that happened in this very room wouldn't be possible without the friends of the community center, the Union Street players going out and raising their own funds to put in sound systems and lights and speakers and all these kinds of things. But, you know, it's our charge as the city to make sure that we're able to provide opportunities like this for people to grow. Councilmember Brander Horst and I spent a lot of time at the Fair Haven the last couple of months, talking to those people about how much they value the services that are provided in this building. And I'd hate to charge a fee to use this building and only watch those services go away. So I think it's about evaluating what the services are and who it affects in our community.
Mr. Myers.
This is, I would say this is a difficult topic for me because I'm passionate about free services. And I have to say, any information that you can get from the city is crucial. We have lease spaces in this building. I'll read directly from this. Lease spaces at the community centers charge $2.46 per square foot unless other noted in the lease agreement and included, includes the following. Electricity, water, heat, A C, restaurants, access to public areas, hallways, garbage, dumpsters, recycling, off-street parking, sidewalks and ground maintenance. These are already in place. We, there's a reason for them, to keep the general maintenance and issues that we've been seeing in this. So these lease agreements are already in place. Crossroads, Union Street players, you can rent the gym, there are leases and utilization of our programs. You can get all of this information if you ask for it. Standing up here, sitting up here and saying that I'm not aware of these charges, I can't do that truthfully because they're here. They're in this information that you can get from the city. So it's just difficult for me to say that we need to provide free services when you need to encompass the whole building itself.
Thank you. And last question, I, where are the five biggest issues facing Pella right now and how would you handle them? And I think we'll just go down the line and I'll start with Mr. Harpkins.
Five biggest issues.
Five biggest issues and how would you handle them?
Five biggest issues, whether or not to continue with the airport, reducing taxes if affordable, housing, see what we can do. We can't deal with the people that own the houses, that rent them out, but we can at least see what we can do to find out, to help them out. And do some modifications to some of the parks to get them going because they really need to be a priority because it's a simple, a lot of them are just simple, quick fixes with very little money that we have to spend.
Mr. Robbins.
I'll speak based on the conversations that I've had. Housing, housing options, parking, restaurants, amenities, things to do, extracurricular activities, whatever they may be, services, dog park, maintenance of parks in general. I think that's five or six.
Mr. Myers.
Yeah, definitely. So the portable housing and housing options seem to be a key point. The issue is we need to find land that's affordable to put these spaces on. Community services, we're sitting on a building today, a large decision's going to be made. Not only this building, but we have, all the city-owned facilities need to be addressed. And the facilities, the studies, assessments, they are. Parking, I've been approached by multiple business owners downtown, it needs to be addressed. Social experiences, dog park, pickleball, a Smash Park-like item, those are definitely things that need to be discussed. There are a few key points that a lot of community members feel, but our top five are always going to be different just because who we speak with, who approaches us, who they feel more comfortable with.
Thank you, Mr. Bacho.
Thanks. As I mentioned earlier, getting the telecom off the ground is so very important to this community because of the impact it's going to have for everybody, both in the private and public sector. Historic preservation, we've talked before about being unique and being different and that's one of the things that sets us apart from other communities. And so we can't turn a blind eye to it because it costs a lot of money. The long-term benefits to our community make it worth it. Resources that we offer citizens in Pella that are non-traditional like this building, like the Big Rock Park, the Boy Scouts have reached out about just how much value they get from places like Big Rock Park, because that's where they earn their badges. And so we need to do all we can to protect those things. Aging infrastructure, the project going on downtown, you'll probably get tired driving around it because it's a big project, but it's replacing 150-year-old pipes that are underneath the buildings that when they fail, will be nearly unapproachable because of where they're currently located. And then, of course, the airport will be important until it's done, until we're flying airplanes out of the other airport because of the safety aspect.
Thank you. This is sort of.
Yeah, so I think growth really is our biggest opportunity, you know, from a population standpoint as well as economic development standpoint. I think growth is critical to our future as a company, not as a city. Sorry, guys, I'm going to go ahead. Next comment, how can we bring our organizations and our community together though? I think that's a really big opportunity. There's a lot of really great things happening and a lot of momentum to be captured and to really push things forward. I think it comes back to communication, bringing our organizations, bringing our community together, the different boards that we've talked about, city council. How can we all work together to really drive that progress? Additionally, housing opportunities will continue to be a huge opportunity that we need to look at, especially as it relates to that growth that I was speaking about. I think my time's going to be up in a minute. Infrastructure, amenities, things like that, all very, very important.
Mrs. Pickering.
Sure. So I think business development opportunities and economic growth in our community are going to continue to be important, making sure that we have great jobs in our community and that we're continuing to support the efforts of the businesses that hire people who live here and making it an attractive place to live, right? So some of that gets to housing, some of it gets to amenities. Another big one that hasn't been mentioned tonight is daycare, right? We need daycare in our community so that as people come in and they want to move here and our businesses work to attract and retain talent, they have a place to bring their families and we become an attractive community for young professionals and young families. I'm sure there's plenty of you here tonight who have families who don't live nearby because, you know, there's not affordable housing, there's not daycare options, things like that. And so I think focusing on those community amenities will be important. Also, just continue to focus on needs of an air tour, right? As others have mentioned, that's going to be important over the next several years as well. So if we prioritize what these issues are, those will be the top few.
Mrs. Paulsger.
You know, it stinks being the second half of a line because you repeat the same things again and again. And I know, again, we will stress housing and affordable housing is a huge necessity. I think coming to a conclusion about things like Big Rock Park is also a big important thing to get taken care of as soon as possible. We want to encourage our businesses, not just new businesses, but we want to encourage the businesses that are here and support them, as sometimes I think we just take them for granted. I think we too have to worry about infrastructure. And I think, like Tony, a business owner told me how concerned he was about the infrastructure that goes through this basement. told me, how concerned he was about the, um, infrastructure that goes through this basement. I think those are all important things, and I think the city will never run out of things to do.
Mr. Benstr.
Uh, yes, again, city infrastructure, it's been mentioned, but yeah, some of this stuff is a hundred-years-old, the water lines, the sewer lines, uh, streets, and that brings us right back, I guess, to number two, finances, keeping our finances, uh, solid, because we've had huge projects, fifteen-million-dollar osmosis thing and the Jordan well. So those things kind of dovetail, and we have to chip away at those. Um, the vital downtown, uh, business, and my mother was born in the Netherlands. We see a lot of towns our size that have turned into ghost towns. We don't want that to happen. And that, uh, I guess kind of dovetails maybe with the architecture and the heritage, uh, in addition to the vital downtown. Uh, a real biggie on my list is the telecommunications. We want that up and running by twenty twenty-one. I think we're on track for that. And then, of course, workforce, and that's a challenge right now. The, uh, out of town, but anyway, out of time, but the, um, unemployment in the U.S. is eighty-five point five.
I gotta catch you on, Mr. Benstr. Thank you. Mr. Benstr.
Well, I'll start off with what probably is a boring one. It's the, the overall fiscal policy, budgeting, and because I, I think that strongest creates the umbrella for, for everything else that the city does. So I think that continuation of that is number one. After that, I'd say not only housing options, but how far the city wants to stretch to create new housing off, options, which would mean do we, do we dovetail a bit into the private sector to, to help those, uh, projects get going. Community center would probably be the, the next one, what, what this building will end up being, um, the resolution of the airport, which is a very vaccine and could be a very expensive proposition to get that done. And then I'd probably finally end up a general ordinance review and look in at that to see if there's any issues that need to be changed.
Mr. DeWort.
Well, I think workforce, uh, attract, attracting a workforce, retaining workforce is, uh, our number-one priority. And then if you think about all the things that have already been discussed, city infrastructure, amenities of the community, the facility needs of the city, which are, you know, I, I've seen the study, and we're talking about a lot of millions of dollars in need over the next few years. They're kind of all tied together, and the, the way that, the way that we can pay for all those things is for this community to continue to grow. Uh, you know, managed, careful growth is the best thing that we can, can do to be able to, uh, you know, buy and pay for all these things that we're talking about, and feel we need as a community.
Mrs. Skida.
I'm sorry, Stephen, did you say five or fifty? I think that, um, these all are great, what, what we've just heard, and there is no, um, limit to opinions of the Pella constituents, what's important to them. Um, and, and that's what would drive me, there, uh, I mean, yeah, I, I, the airport is good, is a high priority, um, infrastructure is a high priority, uh, I love what's going on in Oskaloosa Street. There are so many great projects going on in this community. And really, the citizens' voice should dictate. And that should prioritize where mayor and council focus goes, along with a temper block in our budget. That's, that's mine.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go on to closing statements, so we don't have an end to just, right? Um, we'll go ahead and start with Mr. Skida again.
First off, Stephen, I want to thank you and the Tribune again for this opportunity. This is a really good, um, thing that can be, um, uh, trying as a candidate up here, but it's great for the public. And I, 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 I will continue to serve the citizens of Pella in one capacity or another. But I, I truly love this community, and I love the, the heart and the soul, which is you folks of this community. We're unique, and, um, I, I'm very blessed and fortunate that I have had this position for as long as, and I hope to continue to serve.
Thank you, Mrs. DeWort.
Made no mistake about the, the awesome mayor's about vision and leadership, and I think I have a proven track record of, of both of those things. If you talk, if you hear the word Central College football, if you know anything about football, the thing that comes to mind is excellence. Uh, I coached there for thirty-five years, uh, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven games, and we won three-hundred-and-two of them. Now, that's a record that most people would be, uh, uh, be astounded by. But you know what we did every day, every day before we went out to practice as a coaching staff? We said, "We're either going to get better today, or we're going to go backwards." We were never going to stay the same. So when you hear people talk about Pella being a very special place, and Pella has a lot of things going for it, that is so true. But the minute that we don't ask ourselves each and every day, "How can we be better?" is the minute that we start walking back the other way. I do not want to see that happen because I love this community.
Mr. Benstr.
One of the advantages of being a, a lender for, for over twenty years, you get exposed to so many types of, of projects, whether it be a, a young couple buying their first house, consumer issues, a, a startup business, a business that's struggling. So I, I think all of those experiences have, have helped me look at, 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 um, people's needs in a, in a very different way, and hopefully that can be reflected also in the needs of a city, which helps accommodate those needs. Also, um, being the, the Lytton City Clerk for, for nineteen years, I had the, the opportunity to watch very dedicated council members and mayors do a lot of personal work of way beyond just the council meetings. And, and that was an inspiration for me. I would, I would hope that I, I could use that experience in, in being on the city government and as a, as a lender to help lead the city of Pella.
Thank you, Mr. Benstr.
The future of Pella is bright for our businesses and corporations, but there are challenges with our workforce and with housing. There are also many exciting things. We're beginning to deal with Oskaloosa Street corridor enhancements, and I'm excited to see that develop along with the tulip fields, um, at the old, uh, power plant. The municipal telecommunications utility is a significant addition for me, and the goal is to get it up and running by twenty twenty-one. We're also working on numerous housing projects. I want to keep a vital downtown that appeals to everyone, the young professionals and our long-time residents. We need to keep attracting tourists to Pella. I want to preserve the heritage and values of our city. I want to keep Pella distinctive. I am always ready and willing to listen to you. I answer each communication I receive. I stand ready to serve you. As Pella has been good to me for forty-one years, this is my chance to give back to the city.
Thank you.
Years ago, I was invited to join a group of people, um, that met months a week to pray over Pella. We prayed for the city, we prayed for the businesses, and we prayed for the people. It wasn't a large group, but it was regular and it was consistent, all that wanted the best for this community. I was happy to be invited, and I didn't even live here. When I traveled over southern Iowa, often people asked me, "Why does Pella succeed where others fail?" And I always went back to that weekly prayer meeting. I am going to ask that you pray over this election. Each one of us, I'm confident to say, is here because we love this community. I would appreciate your vote on November fifth.
Sure. So the landscape that we live, work, and play in in Pella every single day is changing, and I think it's important that we have an intentional vision for the future, um, and, and decision-makers on city council who will work to progress our community while also keeping intact the culture that we hold severe. So what I would say is that I have, um, an opportunity here to learn and grow along with the rest of you here in Pella, and I'm here for the long haul. This is now my home, and we love it here, our family loves it here, and an opportunity to serve the community and the people that I would represent would mean a lot to me. Um, and so with that, I would ask for your vote next Tuesday.
Uh, similar. I, I live here, I, I work here, I work hard here. I, I serve here, I volunteer with different organizations in our community, and we play here. This is, this is where our life is. My husband and I have called Main Street home for seven years. I, I left and I came back, and, and I'm part of this community. And part of my day-to-day job is trying to bring new people to this community, and so I am passionate about that. I'm passionate about creating an experience, an environment that is growing and vibrant, what we have and what we continue to be. And so I hope that I'm allowed to serve and be that voice in the next four years.
Mr. Bacho.
I'm proud of our mayor and our current council, and the things that we've accomplished over the last four years, because I can promise you one thing, um, the actions that we take at council are done from the heart, and are done with integrity, and are done with the community in mind, and experience, and, uh, you know, listening to what other people in the community want us to do is what's the most important, not driving, uh, our own agendas or trying to get things accomplished for other people that didn't always get what they wanted. It's about doing what's best for the community. And I'd like to use my experience to do that. I'd like to do it with honor, commitment, and integrity, and I hope I earn your vote on the number five.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for everyone who put this event on. Thank you for all the people who are here. Um, this is an important part of what we do. What we're trying to do is hearing and understanding the voice of the community. Um, Pella is something I'm passionate about. I hope you, uh, were all passionate about it, um, hopefully taking that away with our forums, our personal conversations. Um, I want to be a council member that is there for the public, there for the community, there to talk, there to listen, um, just be present and understanding. Uh, we have, we're on a good projectile, we're going for, we're growing, um, just that growth and that potential with innovation, the dreamers, um, and coming back to our heritage is crucial. Um, that's what we were built on. Um, so hopefully, uh, next Tuesday, you'll vote for Chris Myers for Atlard City Council.
Mr. Hopkins.
Yeah, thanks again, folks, for, for, uh, being here tonight, and listening to what all of us had to say. All of us appreciate it. I love Pella. Since I, since I moved into town in ninety-eight, um, I've, I've loved our community. And you can bank on a, on a couple of things. I will work my tail off for, for this city, for the betterment of this city, for the betterment of our people. I have a track record of growing organizations. If you, if you know where my business is, and you know what it looked like eight years ago, that property, you can see what, what happened there. Um, that's the same kind of effort that I'll, that I would bring as a city council member, and I'd, I'd love your vote on number five.
Thank you. Mr. Harpkins.
Well, I can't say too much more than everybody else has already done, other than thank everybody for coming out. Uh, I'm going to leave you with one thought, and that is, true leadership is not you being the best you can be. True leadership is you helping other people be better. So I'm Billy Jack, and I've heard that message. Thank you.